All righty, I'd like to call the meeting to order, Special City Council Meeting, Monday, May 7th, 2012 at 5:00 PM. Roll call.
Councilmember Graham Mapiya, here. Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Protempo.
Present.
Mayor Edgar.
Here. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item on the agenda. Remarks should be limited to not more than five minutes. Do we have any speakers? All right, seeing none, we're going to move now to the special orders of the day. Review of the proposed fiscal year 2012 and 2013 operating budget. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are going to start off our first budget session. I just wanted to do a short intro for you to kind of set the stage while you're getting warmed up to hearing about our budget and starting our budget season. You remember that at mid-year, we knew some information. We knew that our revenues going forward were going to be flat for next year, and that was a very important item to realize. And therefore, we also knew that our expenditures were rising. So, we knew we had a challenge back January, February. So, since that time, staff has had -- we've spent many hours together trying to balance the budget. We've had two budget retreats, off-site, half-day retreats. We brainstormed ideas for revenue generation, not all of which are coming to fruition this year, but it was just good to get all on the same team and to all be concerned about revenue as a staff, not just Anita. But, we also spent a lot of time talking about our expenditures because obviously that's something that we do have control over going forward. So, the main objective was to make sure that our budget was balanced going forward, and we've done this -- Anita will take you through about an hour's worth of presentation. We've done this without sacrificing service. Customer service and service to our citizens are very, very important, and we -- our goal was to realize efficiencies with our expenditures and also, you know, because our revenues were flat. So, with that intro, I'm going to turn it over to Anita, and she's going to go over the detail, and go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to present you with the fiscal year 2012-13 budget. For this year, we have planned three budget study sessions, commencing with tonight. We'll go over the general fund, then the second meeting, we'll go over the special funds and capital projects. At the third meeting, we'll pick up any follow-up items, any council-requested items, and then we will have a public hearing and budget adoption. My presentation's about 45 minutes to an hour this evening. Please feel free to interrupt me if you'd like to have any questions answered, and we do have a two-hour study session, so we'll have time to go over staff recap at the end as well. So, with that, our agenda for this evening, we'll have a brief introduction, then we'll go over the general fund projected revenues, the general fund departmental expenditures, our fund balances, and conclusion. As Angie has mentioned, our -- the general fund balance -- the general fund budget that we're presenting you tonight is balanced. Our projected revenues total 11.375 million, which represents a very slight 0.8% increase from the current fiscal year. Also, the proposed departmental operating expenditures total 11.375 million dollars, which represents a 2.4% increase over the current fiscal year, and that is -- the CPI is currently at 2.2%, so our increase for next year is just slightly over CPI. With that, this first slide of the general fund revenues shows a five-year history of the city's general fund revenues. With that, our highest year of revenues was '08-'09 at 11.6 million dollars. Since then, due to the economic downturn, we've declined in revenues. Fiscal year '10-'11 was actually somewhat of an anomaly. That year, we received several, almost $500,000 in one-time revenues, and the last couple of years, we're projecting only slight increases in our revenue sources. This next slide represents a comparison of the current fiscal year's revenue picture with the proposed revenue figures for fiscal year 2012-13. On this slide, I would -- as we mentioned, revenues are flat, property tax projected at zero variance. Sales tax is projected to increase by 4.6%, $113,000, which is great. This actually is representative of growth in the city. The next high variance on here is licenses and permits, and that is up by $148,000, and that is attributed to the program that -- the residential and business improvement program, as well as the improvements at the hospital that are projected to come in in the next fiscal year. In the category of other miscellaneous revenues, in the current fiscal year, we had a insurance reimbursement in this category that totaled $100,000. That is not anticipated for next fiscal year. Also, finally down here at the bottom in the transfers in category, in the current fiscal year, we had several cleanup transfers that were taken care of in the current year, so those will also not reoccur in 2012-13. Okay.
Can I stop you?
Yes, of course.
And maybe, if you could, for the public, the transfers in, could we briefly go over what those were?
Yes, the one-time transfers in for the current fiscal year, and we will go over what they are going to be for next year also. But, the ones that were above and beyond the normal, we had $33,000 in supplemental services fund, the police fund, and we had $89,000 in Office of Traffic Safety funding that had accumulated over the years, and those funds are typically spent in the year that they're received. So, we did a cleanup this current year and basically moved those all to the general fund.
Okay.
Okay, so this is our pie of our general fund revenues. Property tax still makes up 26%, our largest revenue source. Sales and use tax is at 21%, and utility tax comes in at 20%. So, these three are our -- make up more than 60% of our revenue picture here in Los Alamos. Okay, this slide, we've tried to clean it up and make it a little bit more easier -- more easy to see, but this is our property tax dollar breakdown, and for every property tax dollar collected here in Los Alamos, the city only receives 10 cents of that, most of it going to the school district, the fire authority, and other various uses. So, to graph our property tax performance over the last seven years, we've seen many years of increases, and we peaked out in fiscal year '08-'09-'10. Since then, we've seen slight decreases, and this was discussed at mid-year. In the current year, we've seen a 0.7 decline in this proper -- in this -- in property tax, and for next year, this source is projected to remain level. Moving on to sales tax. Sales tax here in town is 7.75%, so what that means is that on taxable sales, we charge 7.75 cents in sales tax. Of that, the city of Los Alamos only receives one cent, so that represents 13% of the sales tax collected here in town. And this is how our sales tax has been performing over the last seven years. We've seen a 30% decline from the peak of '07-'08 down to the bottom in where we bottomed out in fiscal year '09-'10. Thankfully, we did bottom out, and since then, the last couple of years, we've seen increases of close to 8%. And for next fiscal year, we're projecting a 4.6% increase. Our utility tax has remained fairly level here in town. For next fiscal year, a slight increase is projected in this category, and that's attributed to water rates increasing. Franchise fees, the same story here, fairly level source of revenue for the city, slight increase projected also due to water rate increases. Other general fund revenue projections, our transient occupancy tax. This revenue stream has increased in the current fiscal year and is projected at $90,000, which represents a $2,000 increase for fiscal year 2012-13. Business license tax, this is increased with the CPI, so a 2.2% increase is projected for fiscal year 2012-13 for a total of $485,000 in this category. Licenses and permits. For next fiscal year, this category is projected to increase due to the permit reimbursement program, as well as the Los Alamos Medical Center projects that are projected to get started, get on their way next fiscal year. $814,000 is projected in this category. Fines and forfeitures, this is where we account for traffic and vehicle code violations. $464,000 is projected here, and this remains steady level with the current fiscal year. Investment earnings. This category has reached an all-time low. LIF rates are currently, as of the last quarter, at 0.39%. With the recently updated investment policy, however, we're anticipating a slight increase in this category of $5,000 for fiscal year 2012-13, bringing us to a total of $20,000 in interest earnings for the general fund. Recreation services are projected at $1,233,000 for fiscal year 2012-13, and this represents a 2.8% increase, and this is due to the wonderful job that our folks in recreation do with events such as the race on the base and Fourth of July, as well as the ongoing programs and classes that they offer. Revenues from other agencies, this category consists of grants, motor vehicles in view, and other reimbursements that the city receives, and receipts in this category are projected at $21,600 for next fiscal year. Miscellaneous revenues, these include one-time items such as the sale of property, insurance reimbursements, damages to city property. $8,000 -- $80,000 is projected for this category. Transfers in, this is where we account for transfers of funds that are received in our special revenue funds. The reason these funds aren't directly deposited in the general funds is because of certain restrictions that the granting agencies place on the funds. So, but since the city of Los Alamos utilizes those funds for operating expenses, we transfer those to the general fund to offset the expenditures of the general fund towards those operating expenditures. So, for fiscal year 2012-13, the transfers include gas tax fund monies, $177,000, and that offsets street operating expenses, as well as street lighting. Public safety augmentation fund, $84,000, and that offsets police services. Supplemental law enforcement services fund, and that's $100,000, and also, this offsets the motor officer position. And Office of Traffic Safety Fund also offsets police services in the traffic division. And we'll discuss these in more detail next -- at our second budget study session when we'll cover the special funds. So, a total of transfers in of $371,000 is projected for fiscal year 2012-13. And that concludes our general fund revenues, and now we're moving into our general fund expenditures. This slide shows the five-year trend for our expenditures, showing each department's history, and here again, I'd like to draw your attention to the bottom line. Our high year, again, was fiscal year '08-'09. Since then, our departments have adjusted to the revenue picture, basically, so we've seen reductions in our expenditures to stay in line with our revenues. So, our low here was fiscal year '10-'11, and since then, with increases in revenues, we've seen increases on the expenditure side as well, and we'll discuss those in further detail as we get to each department section. To compare our general fund expenditures from the current year to the proposed budget for next fiscal year, there are several variances here that are shown on this slide, and again, we'll discuss those with each department. But I would like to, again, bring your attention to the bottom line. We are only increasing the expenditure picture by a 2.4% overall increase from the current fiscal year. So, with that, putting it all together on a pie chart, our expenditure picture, there's no surprise here that our police department represents 48% of the city's expenditures. They are a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week service, followed by public works at 14%, recreation with 13%, and administration at 11. Administration. This consists of the city council, the city manager, city attorney, finance, and then we have non-departmental. Non-departmental represents a cost center where expenditures that impact all city operations are accounted for. Things such as insurance for the city and retiree benefits and things like that are captured in that category. So, the major changes for the administration division. The total proposed budget is $1.28 million, which represents a $12,000 decrease from the current fiscal year. The decrease is attributed to a vacancy in the city clerk's office, which is currently temporarily underfilled by a part-time contract employee. Also, in the non-departmental category, which again includes retiree medical benefits and the city's workers' comp liability and property insurance. In fiscal year -- in the current fiscal year, '11-'12, the city incurred $100,000 in workers' compensation expenses that are not anticipated, again, for next fiscal year. And also, this year, our insurance costs are projected to decline by $55,000 due to our good claim history. Moving on to police services. The police department has several divisions. They are administration, patrol, investigations, records, communication technology, community outreach, traffic, and emergency preparedness. The changes, the major changes in the police department include the MOU adjustments for the police officers' union are coming due this coming fiscal year, and basically what they have is a three-year agreement, which included that the police officers would pick up their share of their purse contributions, and in exchange for that, in this final year, they will be receiving cost of living adjustments, enhanced medical benefits, as well as education and special assignment incentives. Additionally, in the current fiscal year, the department realized $100,000 in savings due to vacancies, which include a police officer that was out on leave without pay. So, to graph our police department performance, and again, there's no surprise here that there is increases, but our police department represents a great service that we provide to our residents, a vital service, and they are a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation that makes up almost half of our general fund. Moving on to community development. Community development has several divisions as well. They are administration, planning, neighborhood preservation, building inspections, and NPDES. The major changes for the department for the upcoming fiscal year, their budget reflects the department reorganization that was approved in December of 2011, which replaced the assistant planner position with a planning aide position, and this results in savings for the department. Also, an additional $75 -- $77,000 will be required or is requested for the upcoming budget for building inspections, and we mentioned this on the revenue side. This is for the medical center improvements. This is the cost of plan checking for those buildings that will be happening at the medical center, and it's projected that those will be in the plan checking phase next fiscal year. So, again, this increase is revenue offset. So, to put that, to put community development on a graph, their history over the last five years, the increase again for 2012-13 is representative of the plan checking fees that will be necessary to increase revenues also. Moving on to public works. Public works also has several divisions. They are administration, street maintenance, park maintenance, facility maintenance, and city engineering. We used to have street sweeping as well, but we no longer have that service in the current year or for next year. Major changes for the public works department. Increases are projected in water and electric utilities. Also, the city employee association contracts are coming due this year as well. They also have a three-year contract, which included employee picking up their retirement contributions in exchange for cost of living adjustments and enhanced medical benefits. These increases are offset by the proposed replacement of a retiring full-time maintenance worker position with a part-time 30-hour-a-week maintenance worker position. So, the graph of public works shows the department has been declining over the last several years. Moving on to recreation and community services. The department is made up of administration, aquatics, community services, day camp, playgrounds, sports, special classes, and special events. They will have changes, or they're proposing changes in the next fiscal year, include an increase in expenditures in the special events division, and these are attributed to the growth in the city's signature event, the race on the base. These revenues fortunately are offset by greater increases in revenues. The department is 80% -- 80% of the costs of the recreation department are offset by recreation revenues. That is a great story, and that is an increase from 76% in the current fiscal year. So, this is what the graph of recreation and community services looks like. They've been fairly level over the last several years. They've declined drastically from '08-'09 to '09-'10, and a small decline is projected again for next fiscal year. That concludes the -- well, excuse me. Moving on to transfers out. Proposed transfers out for the next fiscal year are total $214,000, and that is for the Laurel Park death service, and they go to the payment of the certificates of participation. So, to put it together, in the current fiscal year, the city is anticipating a $176,000 operating surplus, and next year, next fiscal year, is balanced. No surplus, no deficit. So, our historical revenue and expenditure graph, we've seen this before, and there's many peaks and valleys on this graph. Back in '05-'06, this is when we issued the certificates of participation, so we had higher expenditures that year. Then, in fiscal year '07-'08, this is when the city put aside money for the replacement of the technology, the finance software. And what's interesting to me in this slide is the variance here in just the last fiscal year, which is representative of, as we mentioned on the revenue side, this is the year that we received several one-time revenue sources, almost $500,000 worth, and we were still continuing to decline on the expenditure side. So, this is the year that the city realized $1.2 million surplus in the general fund. And again, here at the end, we're showing the budget picture for next fiscal year to be balanced with our revenues and expenditures meeting. Okay, moving on to our fund balance. Significant changes in the fund balance for next fiscal year. In the current fiscal year, $164,000, $906 designation was established for the business and residential improvement program. Also, the community spending priorities program is in the process of being discussed with a dollar figure of $358,000. And also, the -- we're projecting to continue the funding of the general plan update designation of $175,000. So, this is a very important slide here. This basically tells our general fund in one snapshot, it tells the whole story of our general fund. Starting at the top with the general fund operations, as we can see, the operating revenues equal operating expenditures, resulting in no deficit or surplus for the -- no projected contingency for next fiscal year. Then, the general fund has several designations. An emergency designation of $2.3 million, a workers' comp liability and liability designation of $500,000, a GAZB45, other post-employment benefits designation of $250,000. We have a pool capital improvement designation of $36,000. The Los Alamos Boulevard rehabilitation designation of $200,000. The general plan update designation, this was established last fiscal year, and it's at $304,000. The business and residential improvement program, just recently established, originally established at $164,000. It'll carry a balance of -- it's projected to carry a balance of $162 into next year. The community spending priorities program at $358,000. And this leaves us with our unassigned, our basically available fund balance of $3.2 Within the next fiscal year, it is projected that the city will be spending towards the general plan update, the business and residential improvement program, and the community spending priorities program. Also, the pool capital improvement designation, we'll discuss that in further detail next week when we go over -- or at the next study session when we go over capital projects. With that, we start the year with a $7.4 million fund balance overall, and the fiscal year with a $6.6 million fund balance as a result of all these wonderful programs that we're able to provide for the community. So, in conclusion, the proposed general fund operating budget for fiscal year 2012-13 is balanced with $11,375,000 in projected revenues and commensurate proposed operating expenditures. The general fund balance designations are slated to be expended on the city's general plan, the business and residential improvement program, and the community spending priorities And with that roped into, any questions?
Bring it back. Anybody in the council have any further questions? Warren, I'll start with you.
Sure. On the revenues, consolidated's supposed to be paying us $10,000. Is that included in the miscellaneous? Every year, they pay us $10,000? And I'm not sure what it's designated for, but I know we get that money.
They pay us $75,000 in a sales tax rebate, and that's included in that category. There's also several other rebates that they give us, which are included in those categories also.
Rebates such as what?
I'm not sure if the word rebate is the right word. They have a community outreach portion of the contract. They have a community outreach portion of the contract which totals $280,000 over five years. So we have a schedule of how we're going to spend that money agreed to by Consolidated. It includes sponsorships of our major events. It includes the event that Stephen's hosting, not next Saturday, but the Saturday after, which is the, the community cleanup type things. There's money in there for recyclable trash bins to be placed around the city, various things over the five-year period.
So it sounds like more like in-kind kind of services then?
Uh, no, it's actual money.
Okay.
Like for Race on the Base, it was 10,000, 15,000?
Ten.
Ten, 10,000. For Fourth of July, it's 15,000.
This is all part of the bundle that they've agreed to then? Is that what that is?
It is. It's their community outreach.
So if you take a look at the contract, there's a $10,000 every year they're supposed to pay us and so I wonder if we got that. So that's what I'm asking about.
Yes, and it's within those categories. So if it has to do with the Race on the Base, then it's within the Race on the Base category.
It's not, I don't believe it's for those categories. So if you just take a look and just make sure we're collecting it, that's all I'm just asking you to do, okay?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, great.
When we mentioned the 75,000 that we're getting in, in sales tax revenue from Consolidated, are we keeping track of that? How do we keep track of that?
We do. We actually bill them.
For the 75? How do we know that it's not more?
Well, it's a maximum of 70.
In point-of-sale?
It's a maximum of 75 or it's, that's their guarantee that they offered.
All right.
So basically, we get the sales tax figures and if they actually generated any sales tax, we would deduct that from the 75,000.
Okay, good. And as far as community outreach, we do have a 280,000, did you say? Guaranteed on that, which encompasses the Race on the Base and Fourth of July and quite a few other things on that. Okay. The reason I'm questioning it is because I've always wondered how the 75,000 was calculated. So it's just flat 75.
That was the guarantee that was provided for with their, their contract.
Good, good.
If they actually make more, then we would get it through the regular channels that we would get, that we get our sales tax.
Right.
Through. But if they don't make that minimum, then they guarantee that we would get at least 75,000.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Now, in the expansion of the hospital, all of that's taking place this coming year?
It's actually the medical office building and the parking structure that are projected.
Yes.
Yes, to be in the phase of plan checking for next fiscal year.
So we're showing that we're going to be getting what, did I see? Just off the plan check and?
Yes. The medical office building, I believe, is projected around 50,000 and the parking structure around 77. Those are the figures that we have.
And those are just for plan check and inspection?
Yes.
Turned out to be a good, good revenue source for the city. Are we being corrected here?
If I clarify, those are their total permit fees for each building.
Just the permit?
Bring in 50, let me give you an example to clarify. The parking structure will bring in permit fees of $77,000.
Wow.
Then we will pay out $46,000 to plan check it.
All right.
So you'll see things on the revenue side, we're bringing in money from a private developer and paying their plan check fees with it. These aren't the tax dollars used here. These are, this is the medical center paying their permit fees and then we use their permit fees to pay the plan checker for the plan checking of that structure.
Okay, now, this is only on the parking structure, not on the medical building itself?
I was simplifying it by talking about the first one, but I'll be glad to talk about the second one. The second one is the medical office building. Right now, that's a 60,000 square foot building, could possibly be a 75,000 square foot building. The permit fees that we will bring in for that is $50,891. And the, but the, the cost then to provide plan check for that is 30,000 and a half.
All right. What was the estimated completion time on that? Do you recall, just on the medical building?
To complete the actual building, we're not budgeting for the building to be completed in the year, just started in the permit fees coming in the first year. We expect it to be about a year-long construction project for both of them. And then after that, you'll see other projections in the future budgets that the city will be having. You'll see additional utility revenue because these are buildings that will have utility taxes to them. And you'll see increased property tax revenue come from these buildings as well and sales tax revenue come from these buildings. But we won't budget for those for, in, those will be budgeted in future years.
All right, we have a guaranteed sales tax revenue too.
Yes, we do.
If I'm not mistaken, for what, a five-year period?
For the, yeah, for 40,000.
First five years. So that'll be another good source of revenue coming in also.
Correct. I want, we don't want to count that yet.
I know, but it's nice to look forward to. Thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Jerry?
Can I make a couple more notes?
Not a problem. Marilyn?
On that same note, Stephen, how about the inspections? Does that come, we have paid for the inspections, so does that come out of the permit fees also?
Absolutely. It's the, the second number I provided on both buildings goes towards plan checking, permit fees, I'm sorry, plan checking and inspections throughout the entire project. And that gets the shell of the building done.
Uh-huh.
Then each individual doctor that occupies a suite will come in and get a building permit for the, what we call tenant improvement.
Right.
For the inside of the suite. You're not going to see that estimated here because we don't see that until the year following.
Uh-huh. So when, when it all kind of washes out between the fees that they pay and then the inspection and the plan check, does it come out about even?
Actually, no. For the, for the office building, we will retain $20,000 in revenue. And for the parking structure, we will retain $30,000 in revenue.
Okay. All right. Now, I've gone through our book in each one of the departments. Are we going to go through department by department at some point?
If you'd like, that, we just did a summary on the screen, so if you have any questions about any particular.
Oh, okay, well, then I need to start looking here. Go ahead, Joy.
All righty.
Because I know I made a bunch of notes, so.
Not a problem.
I can go, I can.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Let's see. Just for clarification for residents who might be watching, when we talk about the general fund revenues with regards to licensed permits, with new program, will you explain to them how it's going to offset because of the money that's being transferred from the reserve to cover that?
Sure. The budget actually includes the full revenue picture because the plan is that we will be collecting those revenues and there's an application process that they will go through, which Stephen can elaborate on further if, if you need him to. But then the funding is set aside in the fund balance section.
Right.
And so when their project is complete, they would fill out their application and be reimbursed from the fund balance reserve.
Right. I just don't want residents to be concerned that we're drawing down from our regular operating budget that that has been supplemented.
Right.
From the reserve. That's, that's really all I wanted you to, so that way it's not an extra cost, it's actually a give-back from the money, from the taxes that we've taken through.
Right, it's coming out of fund balance.
Okay, great. Now, on page 11, for police services, you said we had 100,000 in savings for an officer that was off without pay?
Yeah, they had several vacancies or a few vacancies in the department. That was just one of the, yes.
Sure. So what I'm saying is, moving forward, if we, in the next fiscal year, are full, when we come to the amount of officers that we should have, will we be at a deficit if everything remains the same? Will this be an extra expenditure that's covered in this year because we're short the person moving forward?
No, that person, that's basically one of the reasons why their budget seems to have such a dramatic increase. Because they had savings in the current year, but next year is projected to have that position filled.
Right. And will we be, Chief, will we be complete now? We'll have all of the positions funded and filled?
With this, this person we hired today, we are full. However, we still do have the one officer who's, who's out without pay on a non-industrial injury.
Okay. All right. Angie, this might be for you. I know that we've been active in writing letters with regards to the increases with the water. Is that, is that right? We've sent those out. Where are we at with that? Have we received anything back with regards to the increases?
I don't believe we have.
Are we making any headway? I guess that's maybe a simpler way for me to put it to you.
Well, I don't think we have the ability as a small city to.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't frame that right. Collectively, the cities that have written letters, us being a part of that group, are we getting anywhere with the rate increases?
Well, I don't think we're in a, in a position to influence the specific rate increases. Those, to my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, have been, they're on their way to being approved by the CPUC. So the lobbying effort in Southern California has certainly made citizens aware of the increased water rates.
Right. So we weren't effective by writing the letters. We didn't have any kind of effect on it, is what I'm trying to get out there. We, we do other things and people don't watch all the time, so I'm trying to get to them, yes, we send in the letters of opposition. We didn't really get anywhere, but.
That, that case hasn't been settled yet.
I didn't, I didn't think so.
The CPUC, the letters have been submitted, so they haven't.
So we're not there yet?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Because I know within the Public Works, it talked about, you know, our cost for water and electricity going up, and I just wondered where we were at with that for the public. In Public Works, we talk about a decrease in expenditure. Have we decreased the amount of employees, Tony?
Probably right now, we're not decreasing. We have one employee who is on medical leave.
Okay.
And has decided to retire, so in his absence, we've hired a temporary part-time and it's seemed to be working out fine.
Good. I'm just going to make some notes real quick because, not mine. And is that employee a permanent employee or is it just a temporary thing?
Right now, it's temporary. We're requesting that we become a permanent partner.
Okay, great. One thing that I, I wanted to bring up, we in the fund balance in one of the past agendas that we had, I believe it said we had somewhere around $8 million. Is that correct?
It's currently 7.4.
7.4?
Yes.
And is there a reason for that? Was that what the agenda said? Because I could have sworn it was more than that. No? Do you remember?
No, it was 6.9 before and now 7.4.
7.4, okay. So on these, on the fund balance on page 19, so you can follow, we've got the emergency designation for $2,300,000. We've got the unassigned fund balance, $3,292. And when you add that up, you come up with about 5.6 million. Then you add in the amounts that we took out for the community give-back and then the business and residential program, that takes us up to about $6,114,000. Did I, am I not including everything in? Because there seems to be a pretty big discrepancy between what I have in this information here and what we're saying we have in the fund balance. So is there somewhere else I should be looking to make that whole?
Well, the last item is the unassigned, the 3.2 million, which is the available fund balance. That's not been designated to anything in particular.
Right. But what I'm saying is, when I add these up, they're all, you know, reserved monies, even though some of them have been assigned, I come up with significantly less than the 7.4. I come up with about 6-something.
Jerry, you come up with the 6.6?
I come up with about 6.1. I might have added wrong, but.
Okay.
I'm just wondering where the difference is.
That should be all of it.
Okay, well, maybe we can, we can calculate that real quick. Two things that I'd like to have us look at. With the GASB-45, which is our responsibility to make sure that that fund is whole, where are we at? I know we've been designating about 250,000 a year. What is our number to make it completely whole?
We actually, this upcoming fiscal year, we're due to update our actuarial report and at that point, we will have that recalculated.
Okay.
Right now, our figures are three years old, so it's time to get it updated.
All right. Well, what I'd like to do, need if we could, is when that comes forward, you bring us that information so we can address that. Because I think if we've got an excess in our reserve, I'd like to see us maybe put a little bit more into this fund to make it, over the years, catch up and make sure it's whole. I don't want future councils to be stuck with this unfunded amount and then be trying to figure out how to come up with it. Right now, we've got a healthy reserve and maybe some of that money, if it's proper to do so, we might use that to, to shore that up. And if not, then I guess we can just move forward. And I'd like to ask, Angie, if I could, on the trash, public outreach, can I get a list of what we get for that? You know, just a list of all the things. And I know it's over a certain amount of time, but if I could get that, just so I know. That way, if people are looking to come to us for help, we know exactly what we've got in those accounts where the city could be a help to the residents.
Well, Jerry, it's, it's not really a help to the residents per se. I mean, it's an overall assistance to the city, the notion being that CDS is setting aside $280,000 over five years to, for public outreach purposes.
Well, let me give you an example. With the race at the, I'm sorry, with the Fourth of July, they're giving us, wasn't it 15 the first year and then 10 each year after that? Or is it 15 consistently?
We didn't, didn't I renegotiate that? I think it's 15 for five years.
Okay. Well, then, are we still going to be charging the residents and then taking that money and putting it in for maybe the sixth year? Is that what we're doing? Because if we've got this public outreach money and 15 is what it's going to cost us for our share of the Fourth of July, which I know, I believe Rossmore just said they're not going to be able to give, is that right? So it's going to be another 2,000 that we won't have?
That's correct.
Okay. So the 15,000, if that's our total cost, if that's our whole cost, then are we still needing to charge if CDS is offsetting the total cost for us? For the parking and, and, you know?
Oh, charge for parking?
Yeah.
Absolutely. We have, we, that's a portion of the revenue stream to support the event. The event doesn't cost the general fund any money.
Right. What's our portion, Angie, of the, of that Fourth of July? I thought it was about 15,000.
Our, what do you mean, our portion?
Well, it's a shared cost, right? I mean, Seal Beach.
The cost, you're, you're asking me stuff that I'm.
I'm sorry. We can talk about it later. I just.
The, the entire event costs about $56,000 to produce. Is that right, Corey? I think that's about right.
Okay.
Okay, so you take that 56,000 and then you find revenue, the same amount.
Right.
So sponsorship, public outreach funds, charge for parking, food vendors, Rossmore, Seal Beach, and so that adds up to the revenue pot. And the expenditures, we look at very carefully every year so they won't rise.
Sure.
And so therefore, it's no cost to the general fund.
Right. I understand that. We'll, we'll go over it. There's some questions that I have and I don't think we need to talk about them now. And. I have, and I don't think we need to talk about them now. And the only other thing is, I'd like to have that amount for the reserve remedied between you and I?
I did just add it all up, and it adds up to exactly the 7.4 million.
Okay, all right. Well, maybe I'm looking at, maybe I'm missing something, so we'll go over that afterwards.
Sure.
And that's it?
Sure.
All right, great. So a couple comments. Well, first of all, Anita and Angie, I appreciate, I, I know I've taken some of your time outside of here to get ready, but I wanted to make sure that, that I had most of my questions, the smaller ones, answered upfront. But just a couple observations that I wanted to share with the council, too, kind of thinking through this. You know, to me, page 35, which is your, your chart of historical revenues and expenditures, I think is a really important slide, because this kind of gives us an idea that it's a good story, but it's a story that says we need to be careful next year. So we've done a great job of keeping that red line, which is expenditures below the blue, and, you know, as a council, working together and going through that, we built the reserve up there in 10, 11, and now we're trying to do some things that Jerry talked about with reinvesting in the community. And, but we're closing really quick, and so 11 to 12, we are, we are coming back into kind of the reality. At the same time, I think the big-picture projections revenue-wise is that we're hoping that, if you look at 2008, '09 versus today, you know, we were at about 11.6 million in 2008. I don't know if that's the best slide, but deeper in here when it gives some of the detail. And now, in the projections for this next year, coming in at about 11.3, we're almost back to where we were four years ago, which is a good news and a, you know, and a bad news. The, the good news is, we've learned to spend and have financial discipline, and that's good. And the bad news is, as revenue possibly does start to take off, we need to kind of maintain this posture, and very slowly, like Jerry had mentioned, and a couple things, is very slowly release things back out. So probably to kind of counter some of the comments is that I'm, I'm still focused on trying to hold the line on expenditures and still trying to hold the line on maintaining revenues until we feel good, because we've got a couple things coming up here in the next year. If you notice, in the utility users' tax, it's a big portion of our burden, or I should say, burden, our revenue. And, but there's some regulatory issues getting ready to take place. We've been in closed session, following very closely some lawsuits at the state level going on with utility users' tax, and we're trying to make sure that, that we maintain a safe posture for the city. And so there may be a situation on utility users' tax where that may be out of our control, and we may have to address something there, and that could mean we lose utility users' tax or gain. So I, I guess right now, that picture right there is the one that I, out of all the pictures that I stay focused on, is to keep that red line below the blue, and, and it's a good story up to this point. The second thing that I, I think that, you know, anybody that's looking at this budget that would want to kind of take shots at it, you was focused directly on police costs. And, and I want to remind the community why the police costs are there from my perspective, and why I think that it were good. You know, we, as a council, have made a unified position on trying to address pension reform, and a big part of that was to try and get the police to be our partners in going through this process. And then a big part of that was, you know, it was kind of, you help us now, we'll help you later. And to help us now was, you guys, you need to go back to the rank and file and explain to them, we need you guys to help pay for some of your pension. And, and they did that. And what pay them later is, they had costs in there that they wanted to make sure that they had the proper training, that they got recognized for some specialized skills. We wanted to make sure we maintained rotations through some of the areas, like detective, and some of these areas that are very detailed, that, you know, people that come to our police force want to get experience, and they want to move on. And so we want to be able to keep that incentive to keep rotating folks through and, and keep building our police force from the inside out. You know, it was, it just reminded me again today, as we penned our new police officer, that, you know, we are fighting for police officers when we don't have, you know, when we have to go out and recruit. And, and I think, again, keeping the incentives for somebody to stay focused at the entry level and coming in and, and continuing to maintain the environment, and a partnering environment with this council. So, you know, there's no doubt about it. If you look at the financials, they are what they are, and they show an increase. But this is them waiting almost three years, or two, two and a half years, to come back now to get what we promised them. So, again, me, financially, I don't have any issue with this, but I am watching that red line right there. And so, you know, we are also, we've got a couple things in play, because those costs now are fixed at that amount, and we, we need to go forward. The other thing is that, you know, Jerry had mentioned investing on the general plan. And, you know, if we go to the general plan, probably the most important slide that you have in there for that, and Jerry was focused on that, page 37, page 19 in your handout, you know, significant change with this council, which has been interesting from my perspective, is, you know, we are getting ready to spend $700,000 worth of reserves. Jerry, you were right on by trying to be careful, is that we weren't taking that money to pay our bills day on day. We, we spend what we make in revenue. We had three main projects, and I want to keep reminding the community of what we aligned on 5-0 to do with that money for $700,000. We agreed to address the general plan, to talk about the future of the city, what it's going to end up becoming. We went through, and we looked at the business and residential improvement program for about 200,000. And then, most importantly, and something coming up here within the next couple weeks is, and, and on the agenda coming up, I won't go too far ahead of myself, but it's on the city council agenda that we're going to talk about tonight, is trying to figure out how to give back to the community very specifically in the community spending and priorities program. And so those decisions, when 5-0, that we want to be able to go back into this reserve, we built up to 7.4 from 5.9 just a couple years ago, and it's time to now start investing back in the community. So I think this is a great budget, a great review. I, I do have a lot of comments when we get to the special funds, but I'm going to wait till that. It's in May 21st, because you've broke this budget cycle up into a couple chunks. But, but again, I guess just in closing, I think that, again, Anita, I think you're doing a great job. And I think that, you know, a lot of the questions that we're asking, too, I think that, you know, we're getting to a level where it's getting close, you know, and we're, you know, we, we see the red line, and I think everybody's focused on it, and then we really appreciate your attention to that. Those are all the comments that I have. I'd like to go ahead and open it up to the community, if there's anybody out in the audience, AKA Richard Murphy, if you have any comments out there. It would be a bad day to not have a comment or two. But you usually have very, something very constructive. I want to give you the opportunity, since you took the time out of your day to come down here. Okay, great. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council one more time. Any other comments, questions?
I, I just went through a little bit of my notes.
Sure.
And in, in our booklet that we got, I noticed that workers' compensation insurance under the finance department is down a little bit. Is there a reason? I mean, that's a good thing, but?
Yes.
Because we haven't had claims, is that it?
Yes, I touched on that a little bit in the summary. Our claims have been down, so?
And for the insurance also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I?
So both on the liability and the workers' comp side, we're, we're projecting to be down for next year.
Well, one of the things I wanted to bring up, I guess later, but maybe this is just a good a time. Jerry brought up the thing about the water rates, and I received an email from David Chauver from Stanton. I, I'm assuming that everyone else did, that Stanton is looking into some other water provider. And I'm not quite sure how that works. Is that, is that a possibility for us? Is that something we should also be looking at? I don't really know how that, how that works.
I don't know how that works either, but I can look into it if those are your wishes.
Well, that was something that they talked about evidently at their council meeting, and asked the staff to, to look into it. And maybe you know more about it, Troy?
Let me ask you, since you and Jerry are both asking, maybe outside the budget issue, because I just don't want to?
Right, sure.
But, but maybe, Angie, you can bring back, on behalf of Marilyn and Jerry, a, a highlight or the highlights of what's going on with the water rate increase and the potential alternatives. Because I think the community would like to know if they're going to get the 24% rate increase or not.
Well, in all the years that I've been on the council, that's never been something that we have ever discussed, having a different water provider, or, and I don't know if it's even a possibility. So maybe we need to look at it. Thank you.
No, not a problem. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, I think this was an agenda item to be able to go through and get comments. Anita, do you have any other questions for us before I go ahead and close this meeting off?
No, I'm clear.
Great. Anybody from the department heads, city manager, anything else? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the city council meeting at 7 o'clock. This meeting's adjourned.